Are we in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And two abstentions?
Stay.
I'm sorry, did you have any changes to?
I did not.
It's been awhile. Okay, thank you. Alright, we have no visitors. Our liaison called me about half an hour ago and said it's a short agenda and he had a long day and would ask you to relay updates from the board, please.
Okay. Um.
RTA.
We are working on our memorandum of understanding and scope of work with RTA, so hopefully we'll have that finalized soon and they'll be able to go out for their special RFP process to get a consultant. So hopefully, in the next few months, we'll be getting a consultant onboard and be able to start with our zoning ordinance update. So I will keep you posted on that. It looks like we're gonna go, um, the board will have to put together a steering committee for that process, so we'll be kind of incorporating some different people from different commissions and from the business community, I think, since a lot of it will be TOD updates, um, for like the business, uh, the central business district as well as out on Harlem in the B1 in that business district. So that's kind of the update on that. Um, other update, oh, go ahead.
So changes may include the Harlem corridor as well as the CBD?
Yes, okay.
Yes.
And I guess the only other update, which I think I gave the last time, is that the, the ad hoc committee that was created regarding garages and driveways met in May, I believe? Is it May? Had to have been May. So they had their first meeting and they were gathering some additional information. I have not heard when their next meeting will be, um, but they have not put together a formal recommendation to the board yet on what they think needs to be changed. But whenever they do that, then the board will forward those text amendments to this commission to conduct a public hearing on it. So I'll keep you updated on that. I think that's about it for village board updates. Can you think of anything else, Michael?
I cannot. Can we jump back to the minutes for a second now?
Uh huh.
Yes, again.
I, I just wanted to mention this doesn't have to do with the actual notes, but although it's very common for everybody to abstain if they weren't at the meeting, that's not a legal requirement, it's more of a comfort thing. There's absolutely nothing wrong if you're confident that Sonia, as a secretary, uh, does a decent job taking the notes, there's absolutely nothing wrong with voting yes. You don't need to abstain. So just something I want to let everybody know, you're fine abstaining if you weren't here, but you don't have to.
And if it was taped, like somebody could watch it afterward?
Sure, yeah, you have opportunity to watch, uh, you have other people here seconding and saying it reflects what happened, so all those things kind of give you what you need to go ahead and vote yes if you, if you decide to.
That's a good point, thank you. Megga is here, do you want to make an introduction?
Yes, this is Megga Bamaula, she's our new community development analyst, so I just wanted to have her here to introduce you two guys, so she'll be your other staff liaison for this commission, so, if you want to give them a little bit of your background or anything?
I wish this worked, but I'm a recent graduate of the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. I studied urban planning with a concentration in historic preservation and planning and policy, so now I'm here and I'm enjoying it, so.
Very good.
Well done.
Congratulations on your graduation.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. We have no old business, we have new business to discuss, recommendations to staff on proposed text amendments relative to the zoning administrator and zoning administration.
So, um, last year, there had been some questions about our notification process, um, and things, how we were doing things regarding zoning matters and text amendments, so the village board had requested some clarification on that and our legal obligations in regards to code changes and zoning matters. So Michael and Lance gave a presentation to the village board regarding zoning back in January, and based on some of the findings presented by them, uh, we are proposing that the code should be updated and clarified in regards to our notification requirements and should also be updated to reflect our current practices as it relates, um, to processing zoning applications and our department in the village's current staffing in regards to planning and zoning. Then we're also recommending some changes for sort of consistency and transparency sake. So we have a draft text amendment attached for us to kind of walk through, I guess some of the big changes, big changes, are changing the mailing notification to regular mail versus certified mail.
Well, that was already changed.
That was already changed, actually, so yeah, we did do some code changes back in 2013, 2014, um, when the zoning board was combined with the plan commission, so we created the new joint board. And as a part of that, they kind of went through, um, also the variance process, so they really kind of focused in on that and made some changes, so they reduced the application fee, they changed, um, the mailing requirement to just a standard mail as opposed to in certified mail, they added the sign notification process, but a lot of their changes focused on the variations and didn't, weren't really reflected in some of the other zoning processes. So, um, and some of the other stuff that they did was related to the site plan review process, because one of the CMAP recommendations was to try to streamline our processes for incoming businesses and things like that and for new development. So they removed some of like the preservation commission review and landscape advisory commission review of site plans, so it kind of stays strictly with this, um, board unless it does involve a landmark property or it's a redevelopment that's perhaps in a residential district versus in the business district. So those are some of the changes that were made back in 2013 and 2014. The proposed amendment incorporates some of those changes to the other processes as well, um, so it clarifica, it clarifies, uh, different notification requirements for map amendments versus text amendments, it adds signposting notification requirements to special uses and rezonings to be consistent with the variation requirements. It also removes, um, the notification to the village board of any zoning applications submitted and to the plan and zoning commission to request a public hearing to be held. Um, the new process would reflect our current practices where I take in and review the applications for completeness, I notify the applicant of the next available, um, date for a public hearing and I prepare the notice, um, for publication and mailing, and, um, as part of that process, I notify the, the chairperson that we have a public hearing coming up. So, um, that's kind of how that process has been, been working, so this kind of codifies, um, that application process now that we have a community development director as the zoning, the zoning administrator. The code change would also designate the community development director as the zoning administrator, and if there is no community development director, then the village manager or their designee would serve as zoning administrator. Currently, the village manor, the village manager is designated as the zoning administrator and then they are allowed to designate to whomever they, um, choose to be, to serve as that if they don't want to serve as, as the zoning administrator. So I've been designated as a zoning administrator, but this would change the code to reflect that the person who is the community development director would be the zoning administrator. So with that being said, um, you have the draft amendment before you, um, we're kind of looking for feedback, if there's anything that seems like it's unclear, that perhaps we didn't address that you think needs to be addressed, so we can kind of flesh this out and, um, move to, uh, an amendment that's ready to go towards a public hearing.
So shall we take this page by page? So no changes on page two, anything on page three?
Can I just point out the, I, I put sections, we left sections in here that don't have any changes, just so you have the full context?
Right.
Discussion of the administrative chapter. So you see 10-2-1-1, no changes, 10-2-1-3, no changes, but...
Sonia, I had a question.
Uh huh.
Um, under village clerk, if in title, title one, it says that the clerk signs all permits. Does that include building permits?
I don't believe so. I think in the, um, building code section, it says that the building official signs all permits.
Okay. Anything else on this page?
Nope.
Okay. Page four.
I had one issue, and I think it's more stylistic than anything. Paragraph C, two dash two dash one C. So with regard to the applications, and this goes through with every other application because the language tracks.
Yep.
Right.
So the ultimate goal is, is to get a complete application and then get it scheduled for hearing. So I think it, it makes sense to say upon determining that it's complete, because that's what the goal is. But then where it says upon determining that the application is deficient, it just sounds odd that we would phrase it that way, I think if, if it's determined that the application is deficient, because that seems to be the alternative, not what we want, but the alternative of failing to meet the goal.
That seems like a reasonable comment.
Can, can you say that again?
Sure, where it says upon determining that the application is deficient.
Yep.
It's not really the goal to, so I think it should say if the application is determined to be deficient.
Okay. Would you rather we used incomplete as opposed to deficient? I think we'd taken this from some other section that already said deficient, but I'm wondering if incomplete is a...
Incomplete's fine, because then it tracks with the first sentence.
Yeah.
Or the prior sentence.
Everyone okay with that?
I have one related to that, in D on that page. And it's probably getting over fussy. Receipt of the administrator, um, of the completed application, completed and not deficient, so, but I couldn't come up with a different wording.
Well, but based on C, if it's incomplete or deficient...
Maybe just say a complete application?
It, it gets sent back or they're told they have to complete it, so I don't think we need to...
I'm overthinking it, because I don't want the app...
Mention further down.
It would make sense to duplicate the wording though, as you suggested Sonia, as a complete application, or the completed.
Yeah, I don't think it should have a, a D at the end, it should be a complete application.
Oh, a complete, got it.
And that carries through to the other, other ones?
Yes.
So I have two more questions here. General one is, in the past, we've tried to avoid duplicate wordings, so if the notice procedures are the same for amendments, variations, special uses, why do we have the same notification process laid out each time? Because it's a little bit more.
We talked about it.
Yes.
And ultimately, perhaps if we do some other changes to this section as part of the RTA update, I think maybe we'll try to do that where we create a section that is, um, just on the notification requirement, application requirements and procedures, and then, you know, special uses, these are the findings of fact, you know, these are the standards, these are the standards for these different things. But at this point in the game, it just seemed easier to do this rather than creating new sections and having to redline all the different numbers and everything on that. So we thought this was perhaps the more efficient way to do it at this time, and then we can kind of tackle that in case they have other, any other ideas on how we can, um, kind of streamline that section of the code to make it, um, a little bit more developer friendly or just clearer, um, if they have any other suggestions, so.
That's fair.
But we're happy to do that now if we want to just tackle that and...
Well, to your point, we have more changes coming in the next year, so we can deal with it later.
So we kind of view this as a, a stopgap until we got to that, because there are some clarifications and, and consistency issues that we wanted to address.
And the last one for me on this page is, for example, in E2, it's map amendments, but a lot of this applies to text amendments as well, so are we going to have another section for, for text amendments?
Well, a lot, a lot of the section apply, the, the section titled amendments applies to both map amendments and text amendments. What we ran into, uh, part of the confusion that, that people were having is the wording wasn't exact enough, so when we're talking about mailing and identifying a property associated with a, an amendment, we're really talking about map amendments, because that's what you can identify, this is the affected property. And so the mailing requirements are clarified here, that that applies to a map amendment, whereas, uh, part of what we talked to the board about is, is unless you can with great certainty identify the universe of affected properties for a text amendment, then you really shouldn't be sending notice because you could get into due process issues, uh, if you, if you miss people, right?
Right.
And, and so, you know, we're, we're not, we can always send more notice, so an example is when we did a text amendment, uh, concerning the, the business district over on Harlem, I think we were able to, we know which properties are affected, not the adjacent ones, but these are the ones that are zoned, that particular zoning district, we were able to send all of them notice.
Oh, for the text amendment, for the daycares?
Right, so, so we can always send more, uh, but we wanted to be clear that, uh, as a matter of course, we're sending, i-if we're dealing with a map amendment, we're sending notice, and for text amendments, we may not be depending on, on the type of change.
So, so then the only notice would be the publication and the newspaper?
Correct.
For text amendments?
Right.
For clarification then, and again, maybe I'm just being fussy, E1 would be, should we say for text and map amendments, and then two already says for map amendments, three could say for map amendments, and four already says map amendments? Because for three, all such notices?
Right.
All what notices?
Okay.
And then to Commissioner, Commissioner Miller's point, E1 applies to both types?
Yes. And Commissioner Miller, it's, it's not just publication because there's, you know, stuff, there's email blasts, there's signs, there's a lot of ways to find out about it.
Right. So additional methods of notice that are just not specified?
Right, exactly.
Okay. Including the new webpage?
Yes, so one of the things we talked about was, you know, back in the day, publications in the state law, because back in the day, that's the way everyone got their daily newspaper and that's the way you could find out about something. Now, you know, you can, the people are watching this tonight, so they know that we're going to be talking about this, people are getting, able to hop on and look at an agenda anytime they want. So there, there's numerous different ways, um, including the signs and the new webpage where we're gonna kind of just be putting the notices, right?
So from a legal perspective, do you need to have somewhere in the code where it sort of identifies all potential methods of notice?
No.
So that someone can't come and say I didn't have notice, and you say, well, yeah, there was all this...
Right, we don't want to create a situation where, and, and so an example is with the signs, so one of the things that we did with the signs now is, yes, the, a sign goes up, but, uh, we added this qualifying language that just because it's, if it's not posted for the entire time because somebody took it, uh, or it's vandalized or some other reason outside of control of the applicant, that doesn't compromise our, our validity of what we're doing. That's just something that happens, because the signage is something that we've added above and beyond state law or, or due process, it's just something that we think is a good practice and is common in a lot of communities. But we don't want somebody to say, hey, I, I drove past there on the 12th, you know, six days before the hearing, and I saw that sign wasn't there. Or somebody who's against it being able to take the sign and then make that claim, right?
Yeah. I had a, a comment on E2 on that page. For map amendments, uh, the second line, real estate tax bills are sent as shown on the online records. So two things about that, I don't know if it should be on or if it should be in or by, and then why was the addition of online? It seems to narrow the type of records being referenced, unless they're all online right now, we don't expect them not to be online.
So any, any pin that you type into the Cook County website pulls, for the treasurer, pulls up the mailing address for the tax bills. So that's the, the easiest, most straightforward way to do it, because, uh, otherwise, and assumedly that's up to date, as opposed to trying to get lists from the treasurer themselves.
So for purposes of providing notice, that's the method you, you want to use, is online records? That's what you're saying, right? There may be other records out there, but for purposes of notice?
Yes.
You want to limit it to the online records?
Right.
That makes sense then. And then that's, if, if you do change it from on to in or by, that's repeated, I think, one other place that...
I'd like by.
Probably variations.
So, so that's another thing that comes to mind when we talk about that, is like if we say notice, uh, you know, that we have to find the names of owners, that requires actually going and getting the deeds for all these properties or being able to view them on the recorder, and then just because we see an owner's name doesn't now mean we know where they live, some of these people bought their house 30 years ago, they may be renting it out, there's all kinds of situations, so that makes it very difficult. Uh, so we're trying to give the best notice we can, but in a way that we know we can meet legally.
Anything else on that page?
Same thing for listed on mailbox, bells or signs, I mean, it's, I don't think it's been the practice of staff to personally inspect each home to see what kind of names are there to address the letters.
Probably a good excision there.
Sometimes you find out the number of units that are in the apartment building and you just do resident, apartment one?
I was going to say, so how would, how would that be? How would that be addressed, then, would it just say resident? Okay.
Right, so, so the, the, the mailing will go to whoever's on the treasurer's website, but if there's, you know, 12 apartments, we just put occupant and...
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Page five. So what was the reason for changing to first-class mail?
Uh, that was, that was a change that trustee Pollock had advocated for back when we were dealing with the variations. You know, he's the, uh, at the time, he was the planner for Ridge, he's now the village administrator, um, and they've had first-class mail as, as their mailing notice, uh, and we looked, at the time, we surveyed a number of communities in the area, most of them were first-class mail, they're, they're, you know, you can do certified, and it's nice because you get the green cards back and everything else, but it's, uh, more expensive and, uh...
Most people don't actually go and pick up the green card.
So then will you have like an affidavit by the person in the office?
Yes.
Mailing, I have on this date mailed notices to these people?
We do mailing, the village does, so we just keep a list of it and, and track date that we mailed it, so.
But you have some kind of proof that it was done, like an affidavit, I mean legally, if someone was to challenge it, does someone like write out an affidavit as they're doing it?
I suppose we could do that.
And like, on this date, I'm mailing these...
Yeah, that's a good idea. So if we, it, some communities have the applicants do the mailing, the villages historically always done it themselves to kind of be able to make sure the process gets done properly. And, but if the applicant is doing it, we would always get an affidavit, so maybe we should create one for staff.
Yeah. Makes sense, if you're not doing certified anymore, you don't have any paper proof.
Um, so getting back to the, the mailing point, so trustee Pollock had advocated for that at the time we did the variations, but for whatever reason, the, the amendments weren't changed, whereas the other was, and special use, I don't believe had any specified mailing requirements, so we've actually added that at this time.
Okay. Page five. Sonia, I had a question on that one, um, on H. Would they be filed with the village clerk or with the, with you, the zoning administrator?
Going forward. Moving forward, I think they should probably be filed with the zoning administrator.
Unless the state law on that point says...
And I would take the word is out in front of filed? In that very long sentence? Since you raised that, um, I'm wondering, what does that, what does it mean? Owners of 20% of the frontage immediately adjoining or across an alley, could that just be like there's one owner on one side and one owner on the other, and one of them chooses? How do you define, it's right in the middle of the sentence.
Right, so, so this, this H is existing language that tracks state law, um, so I imagine there may be cases interpreting...
So it could be one person, as opposed to like you're imagining maybe there could be five people?
Right.
In this case, if it's an adjoining person, it could just be one person who, who objects? Okay.
I've never seen somebody actually file a protest in 20 years of working with land commissions, but it certainly could happen.
Page seven. Under C, whatever wording we chose for the amendments, what did we say?
I'm missing a T, by the way, for the 12.
Oh.
Of a completed, is that what we decided?
A complete.
A complete, okay. Anything else? Page eight. It's the same thing in paragraph two at the top of the by the online records comment. That's the only thing I have on the page. Anything to change on page nine? Ten? A complete? And same thing with deficient?
Yes.
If? By online? Anything else? Nothing by now. Page eleven? Any changes to 12?
Nope.
Thirteen?
Nope.
Someday we'll have a site plan. Someday, never know. Forty-two? Oh, can we just go back to 14?
Of course.
And under three, site plan review application, the first, and sub B, it says completeness reviewed by village staff, probably should the by should be taken out, right? So it's just completeness review?
Yes.
Any changes to 15? Looks like in H1, that text should be read. Oh, it's not read in ours.
Oh, did it miss it? Okay.
I was looking at my shoulder.
Sometimes the scanners, you know.
Which are the second line?
Yes.
Mine is red, when I printed out of my printer, but...
Yeah, mine's red too.
And underlined.
So apparently wasn't...
Apparently.
Maybe you might have brought ink.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, paragraph four, should there be a hyphen between 20 and 1?
Yes.
These are unrelated, but in my dark dive, 411 in the Sterling Code is full of these crossouts and underlines.
Yeah, I know. I don't know why it was red.
Well, that's where we've adopted the building code, right? So, you know, that predates me being here, but I've seen that other places too. So you're taking, you're adopting the international code, and you're showing how you've changed it.
Changed it, okay.
So they're taking the text from that code, putting it in ours, and showing how we've altered it. And that's why they've left the strike through. So it's not like a mistake, it's just the way in which we indicate we changed the text.
Okay, makes sense. And then again, unrelated, who does the certificate of occupancy?
The certificate of occupancy? Our department does the, does the inspections, and then I'm the one that creates the actual certificate of occupancy. So, because I also serve as the community home director, it's also the building official.
Okay, so 416 says, if I remember correctly, the village manager signs that?
Mm-hmm.
When, when you do chapter four?
When we do chapter four, that'll need to be updated to reflect the community home director.
Anything else for seventeen?
Under, on four, major change amendment A, just the way the sentence reads, it's, shall review amendment applications for major changes to approved site plans at the next regularly scheduled meeting so long as a complete amendment application is received at least 21 days prior to. But then what if that doesn't happen? I'm wondering if that sentence could be rewritten to say, they'll consider at the next meeting, providing that, in which case, there has been a filing within 21 days before, just to cover all meetings, not like at your next one, provided that it's 21 days before your next one, because then what about...
So if it's received 21 days or more in advance of the next meeting, it'll be considered at the next meeting? If not, it'll be...
Something like that, or at least, yes, at least a fallback. I don't know how to rewrite it, but if it's not, then there will be, the next one will be, at the next meeting, it'll be, it'll be considered.
Let's take a step back.
Not quite sure how exactly to write it, but something.
Also under two dash, two dash five, building permit?
Mm-hmm.
It says no building or other construction shall be built. Is that the proper word there, construction? Because later on it says, and no building or other structure shall be...
Yeah.
I don't consider it to be structure. Is that right?
Yeah.
Page eighteen. Aside from title four things, at the very bottom, the application under two nine, the application filed with village clerk, again, should that be going to the zoning administrator?
For appeals?
Yes.
Sonya and I did talk about this, and we thought because it's an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision, it should stay as the village.
Okay, thank you. See, I knew there was an explanation.
Whole separation of church and state there.
Yeah. So can you review for us just what are the decisions other than accepting an application or saying that an application is deficient? What, under A, what are the orders, requirements, decisions, or determinations made by the zoning administrator? What's the universe of those?
So if somebody applies for a permit to do something, and I say that this does not meet the zoning code, so my interpretation of the zoning code, and I make that determination, and I send them a letter, they can appeal that decision for my denial of their, of their permit. They can appeal that zoning administrator's decision. So we had one decision come before us, and that was where they...
Setback?
Had to do with the front yard setbacks. So the commission, I think, I think it was a split decision, so it went with my decision. However, because of some of the discussion that the commission had at that level about perhaps some of the ambiguity in the language, we did end up tackling how to strictly define the street yard in that instance, because they kind of felt that perhaps the code wasn't as clear as it could be. So then we went through and started talking through that whole...
So in that situation, it was a decision by you?
It was a decision by me.
As a decision advising someone, I don't think this is going to get approved, I don't think this is...
Right, I'm the one that...
Sometimes you do that.
Right.
That's different. But the zoning code by its nature is open to certain interpretations, and so staff in looking kind of at their historical practices and their understanding of wording sometimes and consulting with us, has to make calls on that, and this gives people the opportunity to, to question that in a formal procedure.
Okay.
Paragraph D at the top, why is it called a final decision instead of just a written decision?
Where are you?
Top of the page.
It says public hearing decision. And it says shall issue a written final decision as opposed to just a written decision.
Is that because it does not go to the board of trustees?
Right, that's an indication that it can then be appealed to the circuit court because it's a final decision.
Okay.
As a copy editor? In some places, PZC is capitalized, in other places it's not. It's just something that would drive me a little bit. Anything else on nineteen? Big finish, 20.
Before you get too excited, I want to jump back to page thirty. In looking at this today, in 216C, I'd say such other powers and duties as specified in this zoning ordinance, and then I wanted to add, and the village code. Because unlike village manager and village clerk, I think this is the only place where the zoning administrator is formally, their duties are laid out, so. And, and as you probably noted in title four, there's things that the zoning administrator does, the applications they're taking and everything. That's it for me.
Any other thoughts, questions, anything related to this from us?
I don't think so.
Okay. Do you have information?
Before we move on, are you guys comfortable moving a public hearing with this?
Yes.
I am.
Surprised?
Okay. So I will get that finalized, and we'll get that out to the paper. We can have the public hearing next month. The due date to get things to the paper is this Friday for the July public hearing. So I guess the question becomes, will we have a quorum for July? So at this point...
July 24?
I've not heard that anybody cannot be here for July.
I'll be in attendance.
You'll be here?
Yeah, I'll be here. I intend to be here.
I've not asked those that are not here if they will be able to attend or not, so I will send out an email just to confirm with them, but we'll, we'll plan to move this to the July, put this on the July hearing, unless I hear that we won't have a quorum, in which case we'll be canceling the meeting and we'll shoot for August. So. Other information?
Sadly, we thank you for your service since October 2015. Sad to see you go, as demonstrated tonight, you pay careful attention to the details, and that's what's really valued on this commission, and we thank you for your service.
Well, thank you. You're quite welcome, and it's been very interesting for four years.
We may be calling you back in July.
That's the big agenda, so. But it's been nice working with all of you for varying periods of time, and nice meeting you. Good luck.
Thank you. Eric, motion to adjourn?
Oh, if no one would mind, I just had a question about whole CMAP process, because it was sort of on the agenda. Sort of where does it stand right now? And I'm curious about others, because we're going to go forward with zoning changes, potentially looking into zoning changes. What about other communities that have been part of the CMAP process? Have they worked with it and actually implemented some of the recommendations in a zoning context of CMAP?
That's one of the things they look for, is that other projects that have come in and had comprehensive plans and things like that, to then move to help them do implementation. So I think it might have been slightly reversed over at Brookfield. I think they got their zoning code done first, and then they had a comprehensive plan that they did. But Brookfield, I think, Berwyn, I know there's been, I think right now Bartlett is going through a zoning update. Previously, they had, maybe two years ago, they adopted, through the RTA, they had done a transit order development plan for their downtown, and so now they're moving to implementation of actually doing some code changes for their zoning ordinance to update, to implement those recommendations from that plan. So that's kind of, that's, that's the happy feelies that CMAP and RTA like to do, is to take something that we've done before and start implementing those things with actual code changes. So they like to see that we're moving to implementation, which I think is why we kind of ticked higher on their scoring card, because we had, you know, the CMAP plan, and prior to that, we had had an RTA TOD plan back in, maybe 2004, '05?
Sounds right.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. That had been kind of the first plan for the downtown, and then we got the CMAP grant to kind of update that back in 2012, and that was adopted in 2013. And so now we have this opportunity to implement some of those changes, and then also look at our other business district out on Harlem Avenue, and kind of see what we can maybe address with that B1 zoning, to make sure that it reflects kind of the development patterns that are happening, and maybe some of the suggestions from that Harlem Avenue corridor study that I mentioned at the, at the last meeting. Whereas they're kind of highlighting some of those more transit-oriented areas, such as the Harlem Avenue Station that's in Berwyn, but, you know, our side of Harlem Avenue also, you know, that's a draw for that area. So how can we, you know, kind of plan for redevelopment with our zoning code relative to those kind of recommendations that they've made in that corridor plan? So we kind of have some opportunity there to look at that, take a step back and kind of see what we can, what we can do to encourage the kind of development we'd like to see in that area, if that's the type of development we'd like to see in that area, so.
So other towns and villages have preceded us down this. I mean, there are other towns and villages that have had positive experiences with implementing CMAP, and it's gone smoothly, and...
It's gone, it's gone smoothly. Usually it takes longer than I think they anticipate it taking, but I think that's also on CMAP's end, is that, you know, sometimes it can take longer to, either you get a lot of, you know, input, and so it just takes longer to kind of incorporate everybody's input, or some communities like to have kind of a longer period of time. So I think maybe consultants always think maybe things are going to happen in, you know, six months, but really things end up happening more like in 12 months. So I think CMAP and RTA have kind of right-sized their expectations, and when we met with them, they really said it's probably a year-long process, even though I think they kind of say, oh, this will be, you know, a short process. It's really going to be probably more of a whole-year process to kind of go through and, you know, get the input, have the meetings, make the revisions, get more input, and then be able to go to the public hearing stage and really kind of work through the finer details and get it adopted, so, yeah.
And the CMAP document that we're using, is the one from 2013?
Oh, that's one of the things they'll use as, as input. I think other thing will be part of the steering committee is getting input from people on what are some changes that they think they need. Also will be coming in, RTA, CMAP's kind of recommendations for best practices, and consultants' recommendation for best practices for kind of current development trends, or even being able to survey surrounding communities and kind of see what, what is kind of the development pattern in this area, and what can we be doing to make sure that it fits for Riverside? I mean, because what fits in La Grange may not work for Riverside, and what fits in Oak Park, that's, you know, 17 stories tall, does not necessarily work in, you know, Riverside's downtown. So, you know, you can look at what the development patterns are, but, you know, the realization is, is that might be okay in that community, but that might not be something that's comfortable for Riverside. So we need to be having those conversations of, okay, here's what developers want to do, here's where things are perhaps economically feasible, and here's, you know, we need to make some decisions about whether it's three stories or four stories, or if it's five stories, or, you know, when it talks to height, and then also talking parking, because parking's always a big, a big issue. And, you know, what's, what's enough, what's not enough, and kind of what's works for an outer, outer rim, you know, community versus perhaps an Oak Park that has more transportation options, so.
But almost everything in this CMAP from 2013 has been done.
Yeah, a lot of it has. I was looking, I just want to make sure there wasn't like a revised one or not.
No, no, yeah, so that's, that's our guiding document. The other one they referenced was that Harlem Avenue corridor plan that was adopted by RTA and PACE. And then they'll, you know, they'll be looking at, you know, kind of what our feedback is, what staff's feedback is, surveying other communities, and kind of talking the village through kind of what are those kind of like best practices for transit-oriented development, and what are current development patterns.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Questions, thoughts?
If you have any ideas for people who should apply to be on the commission, we have an opening, so let them know they can fill out an application, commission volunteer application online, and they can submit that, and that goes to the village president and the village clerk, so. That's all.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. I agree all of you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.